Hey Chris.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
This is our ledger. Shakad Goldstein, just right there. We had a little chat about the process.
Oh, he's not? Okay. I thought maybe it was a mistake because Paul's was right here, so.
Hi Emily. All right, how are you?
Don't do it then.
Here?
No, no. Put away.
Hi.
I feel like you'd tee that right up.
You've blown your mind. Blown your mind. Might have an extra pair in the car.
You guys probably know the rules, since I wasn't here for the first two meetings that are in the consent agenda minutes, should I just?
You can vote for them.
I can? Yep, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually.
But it was so pretty. I like the clear ones a lot because then it's like, do I even wearing glasses?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, great.
Want me to go check it out?
Thank you, appreciate that, just in case they need it. Got yours, we must have. This is a budget memo that's something that we did with that.
Let's shoot back after because I took some notes on it. Highly tuned note taking system. I don't think so. She's online.
Oh, she is? Oh, I didn't know it.
And there's a, there's no field trip.
Is there any from here?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Let's call to order the April 30th, 2025, meeting of the Newton School Committee. We will start this evening as we do every night with the pledge led by one of our fifth grade students. Tonight, we have Shakad Goldstein from Memorial Spalding. And Shakad's favorite activities are basketball, reading, hiking, being in nature and traveling, and is currently learning to juggle. She's new to Memorial Spalding this year and says that everything, everyone has been very welcoming. So, welcome to you here tonight to come and lead us in the pledge.
What was yours?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Is there something you want to share?
That being a student at Memorial Spalding is really fun and that all our teachers are really nice and welcoming and also the students. It's, it's like really fun to be part of a friend group there. Like, it's really welcoming, like, it brings you joy to see how everyone are playing nicely and like communicating with each other and playing as a group and as a community.
Thank you for being with us. We're very proud of you.
All right, thank you. Okay. We have no one signed up for public comment this evening. So, we can move right into our consent agenda, which is just our meeting minutes from March 19th, March 24th, April 2nd, and April 14th. Is there the consent agenda that would like to pull for further discussion? Okay, seeing nothing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Right, moved by Tamika. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Emily. And let's take a vote, Ward 1.
Yes.
Ward 2. Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Ward 6.
Yes.
Ward 7.
Yes.
Ward 8.
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller is absent this evening, so consent agenda passes 8-0 with 1 absent. Okay, let's move into our superintendent's update.
There's no update posted for this evening. No topic.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
How about that?
We have a long agenda ahead of us.
Then let's move to our discussion items for this evening. It's listed last on the agenda, but I thought we would move it up to the front as I know it'll be of interest to folks. So, we will have an update on the current budget situation and some time for discussion. Dr. Nolan, as I believe everyone knows, Dr. Nolan and I presented the approved school committee budget to the city council on April 17th, right before break. There was a fairly lengthy question and answer period that followed that. The city council now has that in hand along with the budget presented by the mayor on April 22nd. Obviously, those two numbers do still do not coincide. And, you know, I can't speak for what actions the city council may or may not take from here, but the ball is in their court, so to speak. Jill, do you have an update on the legal front for us?
Sure. Evening. I'm just here to kind of provide a little update on some of the legal inquiries that were raised at school committee meeting largely around the situation of what the Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, and how that interplays with what budget is approved and adopted versus the prohibition in that language about prohibiting the, any department, municipal department incurring liability in excess of an appropriation and what that actually means. Outside, our outside council was consulted on this and it's a pretty brief summary in that that language in that statute has never been defined per se, either in the statutory language itself, and there's never been any case interpretation, any law otherwise. And so, our, the prudent advice from our outside council was that, given that there, while the, the term incur liability has never been defined and it may not mean what you adopt as a budget exactly, there's always risk in an unknown and risk in litigation. And so, the prudent course of action, he's never seen a school committee or a municipal department adopt a budget. That's in excess, in excess of an appropriation. So, that was just recommendation there. Overall, big picture is an unknown, while it may be right or wrong, does, is, is it always a risk? Litigation is always a risk. So, if you want to go the least risk path, you don't go that path, but unsatisfactory answer, but that's what it is.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fair to say the recommendation from council was to find a way to make the numbers.
Correct.
Equal.
Or risk, or, or you incur some potential risk. Right?
Dr. Nolan, do you want to share any updates from your end on the budget?
Only in that we also interacted with the comptroller just to understand, should the committee decide, let's hedge our bets and, and stick with a number higher than the allocation at the end of the day. The comptroller cannot actually create a chart of accounts that has numbers higher than the allocation that is allowed by the city. So, what operationally would happen is he would simply reduce the budget by the amount in order to make the numbers comply. You have line item, I mean, you have bottom line authority over your budget. So, he could not book a chart of accounts that would then allow us to start spending until he has a chart of accounts that matches what the city allocation is. So, that's his, that, that's his mandate. And so, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to say, well, just exceed X line item from his perspective. So, that's another piece that was a companion advice on the financial and city side, independent of our legal counsel or city legal counsel or city or school, the comptroller works for the city council.
And then the final piece, there's a memo everyone has, which is just the exact language of the April 1st proposal that Dr. Nolan and I put forward to the mayor as a compromise to hopefully solve this problem in advance of our April 2nd meeting. I shared the details of that at our last meeting, as well as the details of the mayor's response. But in our discussion with the city council on April 17th, several counselors did ask to see that exact proposal and ask that we sent it to the entire city council. So, we did that and I'm just sharing it with the school committee so everyone has the same information and the, the full language of that proposal. That is all I have. So, let's, Tamika and then Barry.
Thank you. So, one request to, in accordance with past practice, provide the memo to the committee so that we can have access to it, one. The second is a question which is more of a procedural one. I know what happens when the committee approves a budget. But after that, what happens? It is, I'm assuming, certified, sent to DESI. Who signs off on that? What does that process look like?
So, I don't have the answers. I'm, I'm getting my lead from the doctor.
DESI doesn't get that until we file our end of the year report at the end of a year.
So, they do get it, but they will get it at what time in the year?
Next.
So, in July?
They'll get this year's end of year report in like December of this year. So, for next year, it will be the subsequent December. Yeah. So, really, the issue is, I mean, in our discussions with Attorney Law, that should the mayor but vote a, or the mayor's budget be voted at a lower number than ours? Since we voted a higher number, it assumes that we agree that a lower number is assumed within that number. And so, he said you could vote it again. I guess I also want to say to you that it was surprising to hear that we now had to add $1.3 million of healthcare costs to our budget. So, there may be, we may have to come back and vote that number too, because that is a known cost that is being added to our, our allocation this year. So, if we're going to accept that, which is not a one-time cost, it's a recurring operational cost. We should, we should consider how to address that. So, that would be, that'll be another piece. Now that that was voted on Monday by the, by the first round of city council. If that moves forward, we're going to need to know how to handle that within our budget. It's just foreign to me to have all these splinters of funding. There, there should be a school operating budget that is whole. We don't have that here. So, how we ensure, I mean, next year, we're going to have that same million dollars and something more. So, we need to signal some, in some way, how that's going to be included in our budget. So, that's our, since that just happened Monday, I, or yeah, Monday, I, we need to adjust that with Andy.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Barry.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification. So, if I heard correctly in terms of what was recommended by council, it said that there is some, they said that there is some risk that potentially opens us up to some sort of liability or but I, what I'm, I'm not clear on what the, what it is, like, like a suit of some sort? What that actual liability is, one, that we're opening ourselves up to by voting for a budget that exceeds the allocation. And two, if the comptroller said that they're just bound by what they're, what they've been allocated and they would just automatically reduce it, then what exactly is the risk? I, I'm just, I'm, they, they are conflicting, which I understand is the point that's being made. But then, how is there risk if it's going to be reduced anyway?
So, that's not a question we delved into because it really has not come up. There is a companion provision in a related, if not the same chapter, around individuals could face criminal penalties if they purposefully incur liabilities above and beyond. It hasn't, we didn't go down the deep path of what liability that means. It could be a taxpayer suit, it could be oversight from the state, it could be, you know, criminal, potentially some sort of criminal prosecution. I mean, reading the language of the statute, it, it's clear that it has to do with fiscal mismanagement and preventing some sort of, you know, one, an individual or department, you know, obligating a city significantly.
But could, could you not argue that the criminality falls on the person not allocating the money that we need? I mean, it's like where I, I don't, where, where does it stop in terms of? It feels a little too loosey goosey for me in terms of advice when I don't have any sort of indication as to what liability I'm taking on. It's just kind of this vague, I'm sorry, veil pressure put on to say, do this or we'll do this. Do what? I don't, I don't know what. I don't, and I don't, I don't necessarily agree that the criminality necess, upon the committee solely. So, my opinion, they, it, it's very conflicting and it's unfortunate that, that we've been put in this situation because it's not a situation we're putting the city in. That's all I have on the topic.
Barry, I think you're right. It is loosey goosey. It's an unknown. We'd have to do a deep dive into who and exactly what enforces this. But, you know, at a minimum, it's a spotlight that will be put on. And I think a concerning piece of it, and again, I, I did not, this is advice from outside council, but something to be aware of is that it's individuals within the school department likely that will get looked at if there's something awry. I don't think it's intended to be against a committee. I think this is large, it was largely created for the purpose of preventing mismanagement and incurring liability by individuals or a few individuals within departments. So, I just, that out there because there are people
Yeah.
in the, in the department, right? That would actually be the ones that are moving the money around
Right.
incurring the liabilities. Passing a budget isn't necessarily incurring liability, which was the question, right?
Right.
I, I guess I would just say, I, I think it would be helpful from my perspective to have some clarity because if the liability is against me, then I feel as though I'm educated enough and I can take on whatever risk I feel like taking on. But if I'm taking on a liability that then is a risk to an employee of MPS or the administration or someone else, then that's a different decision altogether because I'm not, you know, necessarily interested in, in causing harm, potential harm to someone else. So, I just personally would like some clarification on, on what risk and who specifically is taking on that risk.
Okay, let's see what we can further clarify on that point.
So, it sounds like access to the memo from outside council, healthcare added to our budget and the question of how to do that and whether, whether and how and what might the liability be that comes to pass if an allocation is vote, it continues to be asserted that is not reduced in accordance with an, with the actual voted allocation by city council. Looks like Alicia has a question.
Could I add one, which is like, what would the timing of that liability be? Because it seems budget wise that we wouldn't incur liabilities until this time or later in the school year.
Yeah.
By which time?
That was addressed in the memo.
That, that was the bulk of the discussion really, was on that point of, you know, if you take the plain English language of incurring a liability, which is what the stat, the, the language in the statute says, you shall not incur a liability in excess of, of appropriated funds. That means you've incurred, you've, you've incurred a liability. You, you have a, a, you know, service performed that you owe payment for. And clearly, a budget is, is a forecast and, and does not incur a, any liabilities from that perspective. So, that's really where the, the focus of the conversation was and to Jill's point, that's just never been interpreted by a court. It's never been, there's really no guidance on, on what that language means. So, it, it's, we, we were sort of left with a fairly unsatisfactory answer on that point. Rajiv, do you want to?
Right, I, I might be missing something, but isn't all of that completely moot given that the comptroller cannot set up accounts that can be drawn down? So, who cares what the legal opinion is? Doesn't matter. If the comptroller cannot set up accounts that can be used to pay for expenses incurred by MPS, that's where the bug stops. That's what matters. So, we, we can keep asking for additional legal opinions and, and paying for them, but it's not going to change that those accounts can't be set up. If the accounts can't be set up, we can't pay anyone. We can't pay our expenses. So, doesn't matter unless I'm completely misunderstanding what, what we've heard.
I think they're two separate issues.
Okay, why?
So, I think the, the one question is just what is our statutory responsibility? The practical question of what will the comptroller do? I mean, that could, that could involve a whole separate legal analysis if you, you know, you really want to go down that road.
I mean, I don't. I, we, we can keep asking for legal analyses, but what's the point? I mean, the way I see things right now, and this could be just me, we, we made a clear statement regarding the budget and wanting to support the Thrive Plus version of the budget as, as being something that's realistic for which we believe there is funding available and to advocate for that funding. We, we know that there is no kind of magic wand that's going to give us the funding. So, this is a matter of advocacy and I, and I don't think the advocacy stops in any way. But that said, July 1st, there are going to be bills coming in and the comptroller needs to be able to do what, what has to be done to be able to pay those bills. We, we do not want to create any uncertainty for, for our employees or for our teachers, operational employees, for anyone. So, so that's one piece of it. Now, the, the advocacy can continue. I have a couple of, I guess, more tactical questions, including kind of going back to the memo. So, Chris had gone, you, you'd sent this out in an email before, I think, right? And I think it's a, it's a highly viable approach to, to meeting in, in the middle. I, I do see the, there, there's a $1 million plug. It may not be called that, but it's essentially saying, we will do our best to, to close that gap, right? My understanding is that if we have that plug, it, it, it places a burden on, on the school administration and on the school committee. But if, if that's a plug that gets us to an, I guess, an agreed upon number between the mayor and the school committee, that should be something the comptroller should be able to work with while advocacy continues. Am I reading that wrong? Because I know you've been deeper into this than I have.
I, I do not believe you're reading that wrong. I think what the comptroller needs is just to see that there are two numbers that are the same number.
And, and that's the bottom line number, right?
The comptroller, I do not believe.
Because you have bottom line authority.
Yes, I, I do not believe the comptroller
cares about what?
delves into whatever numbers add up to that number.
Okay.
The bigger issue, I think, is that we did not receive any positive traction on that proposal or any traction. So, so we sit where we sit.
From the mayor's office. We did not receive any.
I, I know there are other questions. I have one last thing. I wasn't able to. I, I know there are other questions. I have one last thing. I wasn't able to be there at the, uh, the meeting two Thursdays ago. What kinds of questions did we get from the city counselors or, or feedback or, and anything in terms of their responses?
I mean, you, you can go ahead.
I mean, so, you know, it was the combination of the finance committee and the programs and services, and they did what was expected to be their job. And I, I'm glad for this question because I did have a lot of parents asking, you know, why did this group act like it was the fiduciary watchdog for this group? Because they are, they absolutely are. The finance committee for any city or municipality is, is charged with asking questions about the expenditures and understanding them intimately. There was a request for the information that I then emailed to everyone last night. So how does Circuit Breaker work? What, why was there one year, a $5 million carry forward that was housed in Circuit Breaker? And so we explained all of those pieces and how that works and how that was an anomaly of a situation. There's a perception that somehow we have all this money in Circuit Breaker that we can suddenly plug this hole with. So, and well, I think, to be honest, I think the mayor's office has, has said that that is her, she's even said it here. Worried that there's monies there that they don't understand. They're actually highly regulated monies through special education reimbursement. And there's literally a one-year window in which to, to save and spend. So anyway, it's all detailed in that memo. And then there were some educational questions about, you know, what are the pressures? Particularly questions about special ed, how does it work? Very basic questions. And about mental health needs and cellphone policy. So, so things that, you know, we are very steeped in because we're doing this every week, but our city council partners are not.
I'll, I'll hold. I have one other question. We can come back.
Okay, great. And Barry, just so you're aware, in terms of you, you were bringing up the, um, you know, the, the, the angle of what consequences, uh, that is mass general law, chapter 44, section 62. I'll read from this email. This is, this is our council's language. Contains penalties for knowingly violating or authorizing any official to violate any provision of MGL chapter 44.
Okay, yeah.
So if you, if you're looking for some, yeah, if you're looking for some, something to do tonight. Chapter 44, section.
And I, yeah, I mean, I, I, that, I had that question, but I, I also basically was trying to make the same point as Rajiv, which I obviously wasn't super clear on, but it, it, I, my questions have been answered. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Tamika, you have another one?
So along that last point, that was the point of me certify the budget that the school committee approves, because that, in my opinion, is when the liability will incur. And so there, I, I don't even need to see the memo to understand that it says pretty much exactly what I expected, at least I for one, expected it to say, which is that while the school committee can approve a budget in excess of our allocation, we cannot implement a budget in excess of the allocation. There seems to be a real bright line legally, uh, paying our, with a practical ability to just pay our employees for the work that they've done, that says, that's where you have to, um, that's the line. And so for me, it, it's just a question, I, I think another question that's important to ask and to have clarity for the committee is what liability will the committee face? If there's, uh, an inability to pay someone on when they're due. I know that from when we were negotiating last year, but I think it's important to insert it into this conversation because it really does factor. And so I, I think back to Rajiv's point about the controller, I went there as well in my head. I think that's a valid point. However, it's important for us to know the risks that you're facing with the decisions you make. And if you don't have the legal, uh, guidance, your, your assessment of that risk is flawed. And so, uh, for sure, ask those questions.
So I did ask that question of the controller about this piece about how does your, your, your promise to pay, how does that work? So in the controller world, those salaries are booked and like held in abeyance out of the budget, right? So that a year's worth of salary based on whatever the, um, hiring at July 1 is go, moves forward, right? So, and that's like the year, the entire year of those salaries. So what essentially happened is what, what would happen is what Rajiv had suggested earlier, which is your salaries roll forward as, and the promise to pay rolls forward in an automatic fashion through the chart of accounts. But then at some point, the millions that you don't have have to be addressed. And so then we would be, would be, be cutting that out of facilities, would we be cutting it out of like what? Would we, so we would be faced with a mid-year decision to the tune of whatever we didn't cut upfront right now to just, to try to fund that. Now, there have been back and forth negotiations asking us to take that risk, right? Like pretend that subs don't cost that much or say that facilities isn't, isn't this amount of money. And we can do that, but we're still going to be in the same spot as we, as we would be here. Roundabout March of next year, I'll be sweating bullets because we'll be $2 million. It'll look like we're $2 million in the red. And then what? Do we lay off people then? Do we? So that is not a place we, I think we want to be.
Just to complete that thought, what you're saying about the sweating the bullets, because bullets, because we're $2 million in the red, assuming there has not been identified another source of $2 million of funding. That answer your question? Okay. Emily, then Paul, then Anping, and then we'll come back to you, Rajiv.
So I just want to be, um, very clear about, uh, personally my vote when I voted to approve our budget knowingly that it was above what the allocation was that the mayor had, had given us. And I, I called it performative. You called it performative also. Um, and I think I appreciate deeply this concept of continued advocacy, which is where I think we need to be working on to try to get additional funding, um, from other sources. But in no way was that vote advocating and saying that I agree that we should spend more than what the allocation is by, by the mayor. I mean, I just want to be super duper clear about that because for us to, to do something like that, I mean, we can talk about the legalities and we can talk about, you know, fiscal responsibility and mismanagement and, you know, what, what our role is and job is as a school committee. Um, but at the end of the day, I, I, I would never support that. And, and, you know, we've had some pretty stark, uh, presentations about what things are going to look like. And we have a responsibility to let staff know by a certain date about whether or not we are going to be doing cuts. Um, and that's not July 1st. So we need to start making these decisions sooner rather than later, as awful as they are. Thanks.
Uh, Paul?
Let me just follow up with Emily's point. Putting aside the, um, whatever legal certainty or ambiguity exists, in, in the hypothetical that, that the two numbers are still different as we approach July 1st. There are two logistical issues that we've been talking around. One is, is that the superintendent actually has a provision in her contract that she must manage expenditures consistent with the appropriation the school department has received. That, that's actually language from her contract. There, there is a question, of course, at what point and how she would demonstrate that she's going to do that, but that, that is, that's her contractual obligation. In addition, what, what would make that difficult in the current circumstance were the school committee to not revote on the budget is there would be a disconnect between the approved budget that this body has voted on and the allocation. And so in essence, we would not have provided guidance to the superintendent as to how she should carry out that contractual obligation of hers. So I, I, I think at some point, again, in the hypothetical that the two numbers are still different as we hit, let's say, June 1st. Or some date around that. I think this body is going to have to provide advice in the form of a revised budget approval to provide the guidance to the superintendent for her to carry out her contractual obligation.
Thank you. Anping?
Yeah, it's a very difficult situation. Um, I think, um, my colleagues express a similar concerns about this whole process from legal perspective. Seems a little bit more, uh, uh, grave than I had expected. So, but a, a, again, I'd like to acknowledge that, um, our school committee, uh, leadership is working very hard past few weeks to advocate for our, um, the, our budget. And I think that's, that's very meaningful, uh, regardless of the outcome. And we need to do that. And we've got a lot of support. So I want to add my voice to this, uh, huge efforts. And also I, I, I agree that, um, you know, whether we get money or not, uh, you know, superintendent has to think about, uh, the outcome and, um, you know, logistically speaking, i- if we do not get money, then, you know, possibly we'll have to lay off some staff which might, uh, start very soon. That's very painful. Um, so this is very difficult. But also, uh, Chris, I'd like you to just, uh, remind me and all the people and, what's now the final analysis? What's the dollar amount? Here, I'm reading here, sounds like, um, uh, could it be half a million dollars? Or could it be gap, could be one, one million, uh, uh, $564? What, what's the total money? I, I understand, you know, it's compromise. So each side has to make a little bit concession. But, uh, just remind us again.
Are, are you referring to the status quo of the situation? Are you referring to the compromise proposal we put forth on April 1st?
That, that probably my, my challenge here, uh, because I'm reading this, uh, before I came here, I read it. Now I'm reading again, um, your, your memo. And I'm not quite clear about exact, uh, uh, the gap or the, uh, sticking point. And of course, this only from your perspective, we, we, we do not see, uh, mayor's, uh, 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 current situation now. But, uh, just reminded me, uh, a- as best as you can. What, what's, how much money we're talking about, uh, again. So we can understand the implications of this.
Based on the, the funds that the mayor has indicated a willingness to provide to MPS by way of free cash, that leaves a $2.2 million unfunded amount relative to the budget we have passed. So that is the status quo of the situation. Now keep in mind, the budget we have passed does not include funding for kindergarten aides. So that 2.2 million could possibly become 3 million.
3 million, yeah, yeah.
Uh, depending on, um, whatever decision may come from the court on, uh, the issue of the kindergarten aid.
Yeah.
In terms of the, the, the compromise proposal, if that's what, um, you were also referring to, that would be relative to where we are. So the, the $670,000 of incremental risk we've agreed to take on, we've already done. That is baked into our school committee approved budget. We have assumed a greater carry forward and we have assumed that we will receive the $320,000 of title funding that previously, um, was not in the budget. We would be assuming an incremental $1 million of efficiencies or reductions. The kindergarten aids in the proposal are contemplated to be backstopped by the education stabilization fund, should they be required. So between where we are and the compromise proposal is really, um, 800 some thousand dollars plus the backstop of the stabilization fund.
If mayor's office did not give any inch, no money, not even one penny more, are we doing our own whatever, uh, concession or the, uh, risk as, what, what's the word again?
Risk.
Risk, yeah. The, the, what, for the reductions and efficiencies, yeah.
Are we willing to do our part even though mayor, city does not do anything to meet us in a, in a between, so to speak?
Well, I think that's going to have to be the, uh, assuming, um, there is no other source of current funding from the mayor's office. And assuming we are going to take our advice of council and we're, we're going to have the number that matches the mayor's number one way or another. I think it's going to be up to the committee to determine how we get there. And is that going to be by, let's say, making hard cuts? Or is that going to be by taking incremental risk? Or is it going to be by some combination of those things?
So it's possible we, school, as school committee, we need to review the budget again and even vote that if, if city does nothing and we have to revise our budget.
Correct. If that, that would be the, uh,
Just because I'll need guidance on how you want me to make this work.
That's, that's true.
Right.
Whether we will lay off teachers or we will cut some programs to, to save our, uh, staff or do whatever, uh, they, they, the, you know, uh, challenging, uh, uh, you know, uh, decisions, how to do that.
Yeah. And, and by the way, I think Dr. Nolan brought up a good point, one that we, we had, had discussed offline. I, I am in agreement that I believe we would need to add the 1.3 million dollars of the very suddenly late announced healthcare premium increase, uh, to our budget as that is a, you know, next year.
Right.
We're going to have an increase in healthcare insurance and it's going to include that 1.3 million dollars. So to the extent we're not, it, it's, it's part of the problem of, of how this has been done over the years of we have these off the books things, these expenses that get funded outside of our budget. And then when there's a percentage applied to the budget for next year, it's not that, it's not, it's not a percentage of the whole. So we need to fully bake in those costs in the budget we approve and the funds we get. Um, that would be my viewpoint.
Last point, um, mayor office, let's say, has a loud speaker and, you know, email certainly reached more, much more, um, residents than we can. But I, I think, and I appreciate that we have done tremendous work. You know, Doc Nolan and you and other people tried very best to educate committee. But with this situation, this additional 1.3 million, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, health insurance cost, um, I think we, we need to educate the community to see if we get more support. So far, it sounds like city council is not very motivated to lend support to us.
I've had a lot of discussions with city councilors over the last.
I was away. Those day.
So I cannot speak for what the city council will do or will not do, but I can tell you that there are a, um, more than a few city councilors who are very actively engaged in this and looking to find, uh, levers to pull to assist us in getting funding.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Rajiv, you had another?
A- a- actually going back to the healthcare costs, I just wanted to confirm that we, the mayor had referred to a, an unexpected healthcare expense that had come up. And for, for this year, And for, for this year, I think it was for this year, not for the, or, or was it for the coming year? Was going to be, was gonna cover it through free cash. So is that still in place for this year?
It's for next year. And it was the rate, we budgeted for a 5% increase for healthcare. It turned out to be 7.8%, but then that day we learned that it was actually at 11%. So that million is the additional amount of money required to get us to that 11% healthcare number, which will be an ongoing allocation. So we need to add it to our budget.
Understood. So, so, but, but the mayor had said since it was an unexpected expense, she was going to cover it through free cash for next year. Is that correct? I agree with Chris in terms of
Yeah.
it should be added to our budget because it, it's our expense.
Yep.
But are we, are we still assuming or do we have a commitment that for next year? It like, we would add it to our budget, but it would be offset by a free cash flow payment?
Correct, yes.
My, my understanding is she is, uh, she, the mayor is still planning on docketing a 1.3 million dollar item.
It was docketed last night, actually, and voted by the committee, the city council last night, the subcommittee. Um, so I assume it goes to the big council next.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That, that's helpful because, Chris, I do agree. It, we need to have an all in budget and but I wanted to make sure that we didn't have a 2.2 million dollar gap that was suddenly gonna become a, a 3.4 million dollar gap.
Right. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I just wanna guard also against this splintering of the budget really does create a problem because let's say we didn't revoke the budget and there was that 1.3 million hanging out there. Next year, we then have to add it to our allocation and it will pump up our allocation beyond the 4.5% that it costs this year. And we will look as if we are being greedy and asking for a larger allocation when it's really a level allocation from the prior year. So too, if we take Stephen's entire budget out, as has been proposed through free cash, that's gonna lower our allocation and it's going to have to be a hole that we are making up in the subsequent year. And I just wanna guard against that because what happened in the mayor's presentation last week was indeed the discussion that now our allocation is 4.45%, even though that really isn't the allocate, like it's not 4.45% for the operations of schools per se. Now it's free cash for this, free cash for this. Things that were backstopped with free cash previously are lumped into that number in addition to adding debt service and shared services and all these things that haven't previously been in our number. So I had a lot of questions this week from folks like saying, wait, I thought the allocation was 3.65. Now it's 4.45 and you asked for roundabout that, didn't you? So you got what you wanted. So that is the shell game that we have to really guard against because it's not 4.45% that we are receiving. It's, and it's this splintered budgeting that confuses the public and erodes the trust in our process.
Right. So we, we, we should show an all in budget.
Yes.
But I've, I've also seen an increase of 2.2% being displayed. I don't think that's accurate either. So the truth is somewhere in between. And at some point, it would be nice to be able to show here's what's in the budget, here's what's growing, here's e- essentially, I think we have to show any free cash coming in for those expenses as being applied to the budget in, for, for better or worse, in a targeted manner. This, this was funding that came in with the intent of covering a benefit shortfall or whatever the case might be. And that hopefully will make it easier for us to show.
Right. I guess I just wanna also mention that it was, it was mentioned that the new nursing contracts have been settled for the nurses, which is indeed a school-based, we receive services from the nurses. It is unusual to me that we don't have those in our budget and manage those. We had no, this committee had no insight into those negotiations. We've, we saw the number. That was lumped into that discussion of our overall allocation. Whereas previously, it was not known to us. So I, and understandably, I'm happy for us to own the full allocation and the full set of expenses that we have, but let's put it all in the, in one bucket then.
Which is back to the, the fuzziness of the number.
Right.
Because the city has, as far, as far back as I can remember, and Emily has more institutional, has always paid for school nurses separately, not within the school's budget. It, it would be akin in some ways to saying, well, there's a certain amount of roadway that is included in the blue zones for each school. So what's the I know where you're going. I, I get it.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on the, uh, the budget item? Okay, let's move on.
Sorry.
Thank you, Joe.
One, one very quick thing. I just wanna confirm, my understanding is that in, in terms of our school system and probably any school system, we don't, we, we don't really incur expenses on a straight line, correct? They, they are more, they are seasonal. We, we have ups and downs based on the, kind of the cadence of the school year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to, uh, our policy revision items.
Do you mind if we do science next?
Sure. Yes, we can do that. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I am.
Just so staff can go home.
Absolutely. Yes. Let's go to the science, uh, um, science curriculum adoption.
Okay, so I'm gonna just introduce Dr. Gina Flanagan, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Liz Butler Everett, who is our KDA eight Science, Technology and Engineering Curriculum Coordinator. Uh, they're here tonight because of policies IGA and IGD from our policy handbook. Policy IGA is a curriculum development mandate to regularly evaluate our curriculum and revise it as needed in terms of modern practices and, uh, new needs. And IGD, as you know, from doing our EL curriculum adoption last year, indicates that the school committee, after recommendations from our administrative staff, have to adopt curriculum. Um, it was a joy to get here to Newton and to see the work that Liz Butler Everett had done. I showed it to you last year. She had done an audit of sorts herself. She had mapped um, the different expectations for different grade levels. I took that to city council and was able to obtain funding to do the things we're about to tell you about. So I'm gonna turn it over to them. Um, it's really good to be able to be here. I'm really proud of this work.
Thank you so much, everybody. It's good to see you once again. I wanna echo Anna's sentiments about, uh, Liz Butler Everett. When I came here, it was one of those content areas that there was clear that there was a lot of thought and work going into that despite the fact that we did not have an official curriculum review process. So I commend Liz for her hard work in this area and she's done a great job. Um, tonight, as Anna outlined with you, we're going to kind of review some of the work that's been happening with this uh, particular curriculum adoption. But before we get into the nitty gritty, I, I wanna remind you of our curriculum review cycle. As, as Anna kind of outlined, Liz has been doing, uh, phase one and two all by herself. And so, um, tonight we're here to formally adopt uh, curriculum for pre-K, uh, I'm sorry, for K to eight, Open Sai Ed. I also wanted to just remind you of our curriculum review cycle, our timeline by discipline. You've seen this many times, but I feel it's, you know, important to reiterate that we have a process for this type of work and link into that. Without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Liz so she can walk you through, uh, all the different pieces that got us here this evening.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be here today. I'm gonna start off with a timeline here. Here you can see a timeline, uh, from 2016 to present day with that cut in the middle. And we start in 2016 because just prior to 2016, the next generation science standards were released and Massachusetts adopted their own version that was very similar to the next generation science standards. At that time, um, high quality instructional materials were really not available at either the elementary or middle school level. And so we had to figure out what to do to make the adjustments to match the new, um, framework. Um, here's a little bit about the framework shifts that happened in science. There was really a rethinking of how students might best learn science in the K to 12. The, the framework shifts that Massachusetts adopted from NGSS are, fall into these three buckets. So first is three dimensional learning. When we think about science, the way we used to learn it, we really used to learn the core ideas or just the content. But the NGSS standards and the Massachusetts framework, they forefront the practices, the way that we do science, the way we ask questions, the way we do investigations. And we do those things in order to figure out the content, right? And so the cross cutting concepts, things like patterns that we see throughout science, structure and function also come together as we shape the new framework and the standards that we had to move to in 2016. Those things we learn about through thinking about complex science phenomena. So we have up there an X-ray of a foot. Um, the sixth graders across the district just tried out a new unit, a new cells unit. When you were learning about cells in middle school, you probably learned about it making a cell poster, right? A poster of what, what was inside a cell. And the students who tried out this new unit in, in Newton across the district, they learned, started off learning about cells by looking at these X-rays and medical records of a, of a kid who had injured themselves. And so they learned about cells as a way to learn about healing and body systems as a way to learn about healing. So the complex science phenomena allows students to explain real world events around them. And they do that through building conceptual understanding. The picture on the right hand side shows a model that first grade students in a unit that they were piloting recently made in order to explain how sound travels from the bell, sound.
That was right up here.
And so by doing investigations, they then were able to put together this model to, um, show their conceptual understanding. And when we build a really, a really strong conceptual understand, understanding, our knowledge, our understanding of the core ideas is deepened and we can, um, be able to explain, uh, science phenomena. So if we go back to this, um, timeline here, between 2016 and 2021, again, I said there weren't a lot of high quality instructional materials available. Middle school teachers across the district came together, looked at the new frameworks and started to write their own curriculum. We adopted a few units to try to fill holes at the elementary level. And this all happened before I came in 2021. And then in 2021, when I came, I wanted to see what was happening across the district and started a curriculum review and assessment. Teachers in the middle school level told me the work that they had been doing up to that point and also told me what the holes were in the work that they had been doing up to that point. It's really hard to write curriculum as a teacher for all teachers across the district. They noticed that, um, it was very difficult for them to find those complex phenomena. And it was very difficult to integrate practices as they were writing curriculum. And it was very difficult to disseminate that curriculum and lead professional development for each other across the district. Those were some of the holes that they communicated to me as part of this curriculum review. And here's just an example of some of the standards review that I did in 2021, 22. On the left hand side there, you can see the elementary science units, that sort of big fixture. Those are color coded by how well aligned the units at the time, this is 2021, were to the 2016 frameworks. So we really hadn't made much movement in the, at the elementary level towards the 2016 frameworks. You can see there the units that I was talking about that we had adopted at the time. The red indicates that those units that we were using were not at all aligned to the new standards. Orange somewhere in between, green aligned. And on the right hand side, you can see the grade six standards analysis. That's just one snapshot from one school and one grade, sixth grade. And the standards there are, um, color coded in a similar way. Obviously, there are more standards that are green there because the middle school teachers had worked on that curriculum. Um, but, uh, they had identified some of the holes that I just shared with you. So I identified a need for high quality curriculum adoption. That was pretty clear. And, um, again, we were just starting to see some of these high quality instructional materials available. Uh, that, the high quality curriculum that we were looking for, we wanted to be fully aligned to the Massachusetts Science and Tech Engineering Framework. We wanted that pedagogical foundation that I spoke about, the science practices to drive the science learning. And we wanted the curriculum to be able to provide universal foundational guidance for teachers around universal design for learning and culturally responsive instruction. And then finally, we wanted that curriculum to be easy enough that, that I could lead professional development for new teachers that we could give that curriculum to new teachers or vet teachers alike and they could figure out how to teach the units on their own in any classroom across the district. In 2022, 23, we began pilots both at the elementary level and at the middle school level. At the elementary level, we piloted another one of the Smithsonian units and an Amplify unit. Amplify at the time was the only, um, elementary, was the only elementary curriculum that had been, um, vetted by Ed Reports and Curate. At the middle school level, we started piloting Open Sai Ed. Uh, both Smithsonian and Amplify didn't meet our criteria for curriculum that we want to adopt. Open Sai Ed did, and we decided to expand that, um, that pilot. The following year in 2020, at the end of that year, in 2023, I got a two-year, um, grant to, for 17 teachers across the district to participate in a field test for Open Sai Ed. At that time, Open Sai curriculum was established for the middle school grades and that's what we piloted. But the Open Sai Ed elementary curriculum was just being written. So for the past two years, a grant funded 17 teachers have been field testing, uh, science curriculum across the district. At this point, they've, they're in the middle of implementing their fourth unit. And we've been analyzing that all along. During that time, middle school has continued, uh, to pilot Open Sai Ed and use their units across the district funded by, uh, Newton School Foundation grants and DSE implementation grants. We've been able to provide professional development for all middle school teachers across the district. And all middle school teachers have implemented at least one and sometimes three or four Open Sai Ed units with that professional development. Why we're recommending Open Sai Ed curriculum today is that it provides curric, coherent vertical alignment and progression through, uh, the science framework for all students K through eight. All of the units, um, have been rated as high quality using the Equip rubric. And, um, it provi, provides embedded science and engineering practices throughout. Open Sai Ed meets all of the criteria that I discussed earlier. And also it's a financially, um, sound and responsible curriculum. As an open source curriculum, the cost associated with the curriculum is a materials cost. There's no, um, annual subscription fee with Open Sai Ed, unlike Amplify, which we piloted a few years ago. Um, and so the cost associated is an initial investment and then any consumables or non consumables that we need after that. The other thing that I want to bring to your attention is that Open Sai Ed, we can see parallels between the open, the benefits of Open Sai Ed and our recent portrait of a learner. For example, um, Open Sai Ed builds, believes deeply in students investigating um, on their own in order to figure out complex phenomena. We can connect that to learner's mindset and critical thinking. It also supports all students through universal design for learning and ideas about how we adapt the curriculum for multilingual learners. We can connect that to the empathy bucket, a portrait of a learner. With that in mind, um, I'm gonna quickly talk to you about the costs of the curriculum. There are two, um, two buckets for curriculum cost in science, um, and for any curriculum. First, you'd have an initial curriculum investment. In the gray there, you see an initial curriculum investment broken down by grade level. Right now, we're poised to adopt and implement K through two and six through eight next year with funds from, um, the curriculum, uh, with curriculum funds allocated by the city. You can see the amounts right there. We would plan then to implement three through five the following year with anticipated costs shown in yellow.
I think we should pause there and just kind of focus on that yellow box because that is going to be a need for next year. Just wanna emphasize that piece.
Spoiler alert, next year's budget already.
Sorry. Think ahead. Good, I'm sorry.
That's okay. On the right hand side, you see the annual consumables estimate. We always have consumables in science. Um, and we have consumables in every subject area, but science consumables are higher than almost all, uh, subject areas. So, um, the estimates there are that there's an annual So the estimates there are that there's an annual consumable cost for K through five with this curriculum of about twelve dollars per student per year. And a six through eight annual consumables cost of about forty thousand, of about forty thousand per year, that's fifteen dollars per student per year. And that covers consumables and the occasional non-consumable that would also break and need to be replaced. With that, we are offering a request to formally adopt Open Sayad for the K to eight science, technology and engineering curriculum. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions for members? Alicia?
I understand that the EL literacy curriculum includes science curriculum for three through five. Is that the reason that bucket?
Oh, no.
And is there an alignment there? Yeah, can you speak to that?
EL is, roots their nonfiction texts, sometimes in science ideas. So when we're reading nonfiction texts, we may learn about rainforests. There's a, there's a module in fifth grade about rainforests.
What's happening?
During that module, they read nonfiction and I think some fiction texts, texts also about rainforests. And accompanying, I can't say that word right now. We have ecosystem standards. There are connections between the fifth grade ecosystem standards and the rainforest module. But the rainforest module doesn't cover all of the science standards or all the practices that students need to learn. And so I've looked at the EL curriculum thoroughly at this point and tried to decide with the field test teachers also at the K through two level, how to structure the Open Sayad units in a way that makes sense before, parallel to, or integrated with the EL curriculum. There are only a few moments or a few modules for EL where there's so much overlap between what they're learning about in the nonfiction texts and the science standards that doing two different units at the same time, doing science and doing EL separately makes, wouldn't make sense. And so in those moments, we'd have to integrate the two with each other. It's more common that the science standards are separate enough from what they're learning in the EL modules that we would have a science unit happening at the same time during science time. And sometimes that would be parallel to the EL module, and sometimes it would come before the EL module to build the conceptual understanding that then students would be able to use when they're reading those nonfiction texts. And interestingly, the field test teachers who did both EL and Open Sayad found repeatedly that the Open Sayad curriculum, when they taught it before or parallel to the EL modules, allowed students to access the language in the EL modules more fluently.
Isn't this a delicious conversation?
It is. I'm wondering about the time it takes. Does that mean that there will be times when the teachers are doubling down on science? Not that that's a bad thing, but doing a little bit of extra science, do they have time in the day?
So at the elementary level, time is a concern, but we have block scheduling. And the Open Sayad curriculum will be able to fit within the time allocated on the block scheduling. And where, where it may not fit exactly, that's part of my job, is to figure out how do we, how do we fit the components of that curriculum to work within the time that's allocated for the teachers for the school day? There will be times, for example, where they might be learning about fossils, which is not a science standard. They might be learning, or in second grade it's not, but it's an EL module, fossils, and they might be learning about erosion in science time. And learning about erosion in science time helps you to understand how people find fossils. But, and they may have those two things happening, but they're in separate parts of their day. Does that make sense? And there were some curriculum that we, curricula that we piloted where it was simply too long for the amount of time that we have allocated in Newton.
I just want to mention that in the curriculum review cycle, there is a phase where we have room to modify, revise and make all those kind of tweaks that she was just describing.
Rajiv?
Thank you. This was very helpful. The initial investments, is that mainly professional development?
No. A lot of the professional development for middle school has happened already. There's still some professional development needed for the units that we're continuing to introduce. The middle school teachers have introduced some units, but there are six units per, per grade for middle school teachers. And so as they begin a new unit, they will need some professional development, but they've all had an initial professional development. Those costs there cover materials alone. Professional development at the elementary level is still a bit of a question and may be done internally. That's a materials investment.
Got it. So it's non-consumable.
And consumables.
And consumables. Texts, models, manipulatives, all of that.
Everything you can imagine, elementary school students and middle school students and age appropriate using in order to do investigations in the classroom is covered by that amount.
Thank you. Mika?
Thanks. So I just first want to start by thanking you both for really terrific work. You know, the cycle of curriculum review, I think that's the way that we need to kind of, been drumming on about this, but take that model and extrapolate it in all of the other parts of our district. And I love that we do have this predictable, knowable point that we are going to have to invest. And we're going to have to go out and build the case for finding these funds wherever they come from. So I understand that next year is taken care of. And there's a open-ended question as to subsequent years, which I hope that we will be able to have a lot of concrete data to show that this is a worthy investment. Upfront, I love it. I think it's great. I'm just going to walk through my impressions throughout the, your presentation here. A request for a footnote or something, a citation whenever there's an acronym, HQMI, High Quality Instructional Material, get that, but, and you said it here, but for anyone observing this, plug it somewhere.
Yeah, can you explain what the EQUIP rubric is? Because that was the other part.
The other thing, yeah. The EQUIP rubric is a, is a science-specific rubric that is used to evaluate science units, curriculum. And it is, it is being used here as the Open Sayad. Units are being released at the elementary unit, at the elementary level, has already been used at the middle school level. The middle school curriculum has also been evaluated by Ed Reports and Curate.
Great. Thank you. You saved one of my questions. Moving on, EQUIP rubric, yep. So with regard to consumables, I know that there are some consumables that families do pick up the cost for currently. Thinking of things like science goggles and things like that. I remember that fee. So is the thought going forward for the district to absorb those costs or that's still kind of an open-ended question?
So tho- those materials, those materials like earbuds and goggles are really about a personal health. Oh, so. Scenario, yes, that's not considered a consumable cost that's contained here.
Gotcha. No, it's, it's not a consumable cost and actually in an initial investment for this program, which we haven't done before. We haven't made an initial investment in a holistic program before. Those goggles are actually part of this initial curriculum investment. And so moving forward, families will not be asked to, and at, in any school, to contribute any funds towards goggles. Those will be supplied, kept within the classroom, and then each student will get their own goggle, have it within their classroom. And then if those goggles break, then those teachers will let me know, and that will become an annual consumable moving forward, that will fall underneath the blue costs moving forward.
Fantastic. I like that. Is there a technology component about this that I might have missed? So there's a textbook or something. How do teachers kind of engage with the material for students? Is there something embedded within this curriculum that does that?
Are the students engaging with technology?
No, just sort of part of the Open Sayad.
What are the components of it?
Yeah, is there a technological part of it, but?
There's no, there's no digital platform.
Okay, that's it, yep.
And there's no digital platform subscription for it.
Okay.
Math right now is using Desmos. There's nothing like that for Open Sayad. They, the teachers have been using a program called Gizmos in the past. And it's a question as to whether or not that platform is used to do simulations of investigations that we can't necessarily do in the classroom. I think there's a question as to whether or not we continue to move forward with that and embed those into this curriculum as we move forward.
That's going to be a consideration that I, I bring before you with Gina, also for the high school who are using Pivot, which is the equivalent of simulations there as well. The, the use of these technologies is quite good for preparing students to do things like the much talked about but not yet implemented new science MCAS, which will have simulations on it that will, students will be required to watch them and apply scientific principles. And it just allows for more lab demonstrations, if you will, done through this piece. So I do find that to be an appropriate use of digital technologies. Can you also speak about sort of like the use of things like Verneer probes or any technology like that that might be included in this? So data gathering, that type of thing, because we see when we walk through, students actually measuring and using their Chromebooks for that type of work.
I don't think there are any Verneer probes in, in this curriculum at the middle school level, but there are different digital devices that students are using in order to collect data. And those things fall underneath this initial curriculum investment as well. As simple as they're using digital thermometers right now for one of these new units at the, in the sixth grade. All of that is covered by the cost of this initial curriculum investment. And Verneer probes are not in this, this curriculum. Oh, we have like light meters, things like that are being used by students.
Great, thank you. That's helpful to conceptualize. And the last thing I wanted to just give you a shout out for was the embedding of the Portrait of a Learner components into the analysis of why this program is right for the school. I think that, that allows us to be true in this way, this regard to a lot of the identified components to the Portrait of a Learner across the board, and this is one, one area that we've done so, so I appreciate that, and I think, I thank you for the work. So, thank you.
Any other questions from members? Anping?
Thank you. Well, I think we are talking about the, the core component of the education, the curriculum and learning process. And unfortunately, you know, we spend a lot of time talking something which is not directly related to the education process. But that, that's reality we have to deal with. You know, for someone came from China, I was very impressed of the science technology education in public school here. You know, we can laugh at the mass education, as you all know that. But, but the science, I was impressed, my, my both kids went, went through school system, one major in biology, the other one major in engineering, a top university in this country and doing pretty well. Not really very top among their college classmates because probably twenty, thirty percent of students came from other cultures. They were really, those driven students tried to get straight A. My, my kids are not that kind of students, but still. They like the science, which speaks a lot about the Newton public school education. And I saw them, you know, the, you mentioned a few things, but the adaptability and communications and also the critical thinking. And I like to add hands-on, which is a hallmark of American education. Hands-on, project-based education. In many other cultures, it's all learning, you know, remember all those formula and doing the, you know, the mathematics questions. But here, but that probably explains why in America has so much advanced invention and all those big companies, why they grew up here in this culture. I, I feel very proud of that. Now, let me ask a question probably not directly related to this. When I look at our, the school annual report, I was looking for science data here, the MCAS data. And possibly, I'm a little bit anxious to see the test results because we just started this curriculum review and, you know, Py, PyAlert and the implementation probably will take few years to see the results. And I understand Newton's high school science MCAS test results were pretty good, probably very good, but I don't have any solid data. And in our annual report, unfortunately, we did not include the high school science MCAS results to compare with other comparable districts. I'm very curious because I remember Newton participated in grade nine physics as the high school science requirement, right? You can choose chemistry or biology. And recently, there's some changes to just limit to the probably biology and technology. I don't know exactly. But I hope that we still maintain our leading stand among all the, you know, top rating districts. Because science really now is the, the great hope for American economy. I'm serious about that because if our students doing, not doing well, that that's one of the edge we have. If we lose that edge, American economy will not doing well at all. My wife happened to be the part-time gymnastics coach at MIT for adult gymnastics club. And probably half of her students, you know, master, doctor students came from other countries. And I don't know exact number, but she talked about all the students in those programs. They, they love gymnastics, so they come to the club and my wife is a coach. So this number probably increasing past ten, twenty years. And you don't want to have all those, you know, top university science students, graduate students, you know, all mostly from foreign countries, and that's, that's challenge. So again, I salute to you guys and this wonderful work. And that's a real work for education. I want to emphasize again. And we shouldn't be distracted by many other things. And I hope that we will see that kind of results soon. And, and again, you know, if, if we, if our school lost the, our perspective about this, you know, high quality curriculum, then we're wondering what we're doing here, you know, if, if this is not our core component. So again, thank you very much. Appreciate that, your presentation, and I hope that we will keep our good work. Thanks.
Okay. Emily?
Just really quickly, chemistry nerd here. I, I just, I, I, this sounds like a wonderful program for K to eight. And I'm thrilled that, that we are implementing these across all the schools and all the grades, K to eight, and that we have consistency. So this is wonderful and it sounds like an amazing program, and I'm looking forward to see what, as Anping was talking about, what, what results end up being. So very excited. Thank you.
Well, the seventh graders will learn about chemistry through trying to figure out how bath bombs work and what the gases that bath bombs release. So it's a great unit.
Now I want to do the unit.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you both very much.
Thank you. Great job. Oh, we need a vote.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just kidding.
Thank you. So is there a motion to adopt Open Sayad as the science curriculum? K to eight? Moved. Moved by Paul?
I'll second.
Second by Emily. Any further discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two, yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm not four, I'm five.
Yes.
Excited, you're both so excited by the science stuff. Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller is absent. Okay. You may proceed. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's move to the policy revisions, of which there are thirty-seven, it looks like.
It's a big night for policy. You all know Amy Mistro, Director of Business Operations.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Jill Murray Grady also worked on this with us. And when we last, yeah, she's, she's here. Okay, when we last left you, we left you with a first draft. You asked a lot of great questions. You asked us to go back to our PTO and support organizations and collaborate and collaborate. We have right up until last night's PTO meeting and this afternoon. So Amy, thank you for burning the midnight oil and also getting this all ready for today. So if you read this last night, you have a new copy today with even more things. And I will say that um we're just so grateful to the PTO presidents across the district who really helped us sort through, what is, what does all this mean boots on the ground? Um, it's all fine and good for us to create theoretical policy based on, you know, how we make policy, which is we go to MASC website, we poll other districts, we grab samples, we put things together. Um, so really grateful um for the capacity to, to tailor this to make sense for us. So Amy has really been the lead on that. So Amy, I'm going to ask you to walk us through what we're looking at and what the substantial changes are. And if we can wrap in the concerns that we've been able to address that the PTO and the booster groups have brought to us, so that the school committee knows that it wasn't just you and me cooking this up in the laboratory.
We did have Jill with us. Thank you, Dr. Nolan. Um, if you remember back to January, we came to you with a set of guidelines and two policies. And now we've expanded upon that greatly because we did a little deeper dive. And um, I like that you talked about consistency, Emily, because that's what we were looking to do with what we brought forward um for your review tonight. Um, I'm going to go in the order, which is included in your memo. So JJE, which is student fundraising activities. Um, very simple changes. We just moved up to um language so that it is more prevalent in the policy that money collection must be approved in advance. And then within that, just made consistent that any type of fundraising needs to be approved by principal and designee and superintendent or designate. Those are the only changes in JJE. JP, and I, if everybody could just check that you have the current version um with the fast-moving changes. I just want to make sure that you, the version that you are looking at includes in the second and third paragraph that there is that same language, principal or designate and superintendent or designate. If you don't have that, I have extra copies with me. Okay, great. Um, so for JP, those are the only changes, just to make that consistent. KBE, which is one of the policies that we brought to you before. Um, this does reflect some of the concerns that were raised to us by the PTOC um and are reflected here. It also is can, uh, language that was changed from the draft that you first received in your packet materials to what you received today is in uh second half of the document, paragraph one. It includes that the application for recognition will go through the principal to the superintendent for approval. That's just, the only change there is just for consistency. Um, and then because it really gets into the operational parts, which we cover in the guidelines, we struck paragraph two in the lower section as well. Um, it really was a relative for policy language. Um, and they are just inserted caregiver as well, so that we're more inclusive of all family situations. KCD, gifts and donations, um making the correction that it's not the superintendent, but the school committee who is authorized to accept gift and donations. Um, and that is, and then to make the language consistent for support organizations. We really just, the other deletions were just to make it cleaner. We're a little redundant there. Casey, uh with that, because there's reference in that policy, you will hopefully now see draft five. With PTOC edits, which are as of eleven o'clock today. Um, we had a really uh productive meeting and worked through um what were really minor language additions. Um, and it was really deletions to make it easier for everybody to understand. Um, I'm going to stop for just a second because I bet you haven't had a chance to look at that. Would anybody like just a few minutes to look through this draft to see if you have questions?
Draft five of which?
This is the support organization guidelines.
Actually staple behind KBE.
Again, sorry for the late breaking changes.
Behind KBE.
Got it? Really very minor changes and it was um to reflect the guidance that the PTOC brought to us today. With that, while you're looking at it, I will just say, we believe this is in a workable iteration at this point. We affirm to the PTOC and want to share with you as well. Although this is an administrative document, we fully expect that as we implement it, there could potentially be changes needed as we see what works for the individual support organizations. And if there's any gaps, which we didn't foresee as we developed this. But this is intended to be a working document for the first year. Okay. Um, next, KCDC. Uh, the only change from what was in your packet was that the PTOC asked if we could please move the last paragraph to the beginning, which is that this policy does not apply to them. Um, it's for crowdfunding. It takes all external crowdfunding platforms uh out of use by anybody in the schools because the money has to go outside of the school. It either goes to a staff member, student, parents, and as stewards of the funds, it really needs to be retained within the district. We have a digital uh payment platform, so we're just requiring that any uh NPS organization use our platforms for any type of online digital fundraising that they may use. KHA, public solicitations in the schools. We're replacing the policy that we had. It was frankly just awkward. Um, and so Jill found um a just um clearer language for us to use. Um, revised from what you received in the packet when it was posted. Were just minor changes today um that the PTOC raised with us for number three, instead of city-based to say Newton-based, just to provide greater clarity. Um, and then to align language that we included in the guidelines, which is that the principal is to be made aware of fundraising and activities, not necessarily to approve. Um, they made the case that principals are active members of their PTOs. And as such, it's, there's a responsibility for them to know what's going on um and to create that cabal- collaboration prior to uh flyers being disseminated. And last Jill added, which is why it's um just out of uh alphabetical order, which um is, makes me a little crazy, but um is uh KB EBC, and that's just to again align the language um that we support our support organizations and to clarify that it's support organization encompass all that um go within. Um, I would like to add that this process by updating these policies will bring us um some consistency across our policies. It will also provide some structure whereby we can provide better reporting to you for donations. Um, and there's been multiple stakeholders that we've worked with PTOC and in the schools who have been very helpful in moving this forward. Um, and with that, if anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to entertain at the chair's discretion.
Thank you so much, Amy. Um, I know there was uh a ton of back and forth here um with the uh PTOC in particular, but other groups as well. Uh, can you just tell us, like, is, is the version of this, is everyone happy with it? Is the PTOC happy? They, is everyone on the same page at this point?
Generally, yes. Um, I, I don't want to speak entirely for the full PTOC. We did meet with Lucy Reel today, who came representing a great deal of feedback that she'd received. We incorporated that. I don't think she left with anything that hadn't been addressed. She did say she wanted to go back and they would take a formal vote of, I'm not sure, support approval, whatever it may be. But she, she left not expecting additional problems.
Right. Trying to get that for you before you vote it the next time you look at this.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, regime I saw on Emily. Paul?
A really quick tactical question. How would uh My School Bucks work in terms of fundraising?
They actually have a, we can do it in several different ways. We could create a product. They actually have a fundraising function. We've used it before where a person can go in and donate whatever amount they want. Um, it's pretty facile. We're also adopting uh My School Bucks anywhere so that we can have point of sale, say that kids are going into a dance and instead of, we're really trying to reduce cash in all aspects. So they're walking into the dance and they want to pay, they can pay with a credit card right there as they walk in. They can do prom tickets that way. It's going to give us a lot more facility in the schools. Bottom line, My School Bucks is multifunctional.
Got it. And then the, the same policy doesn't necessarily preclude the use of GoFundMe or something. So if, if there's something happening that is not to be directed to Newton Public Schools. So for instance, something, an unfortunate accident for, of a staff member or family or something like that, that's still fine. It's simply not, it's not under the umbrella of the school district.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything, a, a, a private internal of staff members wanted to do something among themselves that wasn't supporting the school, absolutely. And that is exactly why the PTOC asked us, can you please start with, this doesn't apply to us? So they're, they can choose to use whatever platform they would like to.
Thank you.
So um I have a question and then I have a comment. Um, my question is, um, did you get feedback from non-PTOC support organizations like Boosters or South Stage Parents or Newton Schools Foundation? They're a big donor for us. And I'm just wondering if they've given their feedback on this as well.
Right after our first meeting with you in January, um, I had a long conversation with April Stein, who um, God bless her, is involved and shares the perspective of many organizations. So she was our first point of contact of, here's where there's going to be pressure points. So um through one person who is involved in many places, we got a lot of perspective, but it's generally April and then the PTOC.
Okay. It would be interesting to see if there's any additional feedback between this meeting and when the vote happens at our next um school committee meeting. Thank you. Um, and uh my comment is uh something that you and I spoke about on the phone, but I just want to say publicly. So part of the documentation um in the uh guidelines that you have just created and in other places, there are um references to the equity policy and the equity guidelines. And I am in no way, shape or form suggesting that at this moment in time, that we need to be doing uh a deep dive into those. But I just want to acknowledge and recognize and make sure that is on whatever timeline there is that the equity policy and the equity guidelines um get a, a similar treatment and, and we look at them again. Um, I, I know why they are the way they are. Um, but I think um it would be very helpful for us to potentially start from scratch uh once we get the legs of this particular guideline uh and this change in process going. I just want to make sure that that's still.
So we are, we were thinking that we were going to do this all together, but once we did a deep dive into the actual systems, or I should say, lack of systems in place for more basic um fund management, which is you're seeing us here try to enact things that are required by law, required by the Attorney General and are generally in practice in most schools. Because we, you have no insight into the monies being raised and spent in the schools, except for the equity policy, which really only aggressively applies to the elementary school PTOs. So there's a whole swath of funding and fundraising that you are ultimately responsible for, but you have no insight into as the school committee. So we think this process is actually going to give us the kind of insight that you need. And I think the next step is that the Equity Committee becomes a subcommittee of the school committee because you are the ones who have to look at all the finances and say, you would detect outsized demonstrations of funding to one school versus another, versus having parents police each other on that, which is what's currently supposed to happen. So we're going to, uh, most of the PTOs are living by the spirit of the equity guidance. They just will not police each other and get into each, into fights with each other about who gets to spend what, and they shouldn't. So we're going to get insight into how much fundraising and how much stuff is actually happening. And then we need to come up with a new equity policy that makes sense with those processes. So we ran that by the PTOC. There was head nodding about, yes, we're frustrated with this policy. I, I mean, they, we start our conversation every time with, it's hard to get people to volunteer. People want to give money to their schools and they feel that the equity policy currently precludes them from doing those, that kind of a volunteerism. So I think we'll get a better picture after we go through this process. We will revise it if we need to. And I think then, then we take up that equity policy again.
So just as a quick response, um, yes, um, but I also want to make sure that the original spirit of the equity policy, when it was created in the eighties, um, that that, that spirit continues in whatever way this landscape is going to look like. Um, and that, that there is the fact that some schools have higher fundraising capacity than others. And how do we handle that as a district? Thanks.
You, Paul?
Thank you, Chris. Amy, another tour de force. I'm so pleased we keep giving you the easiest assignments and you pull them off beautifully. Um, I have two items. One, one is a um, a, a point which is, I'm really, really pleased that we're getting rid of the third-party fundraising uh platforms and vehicles in, in, in this policy. Um, those have been used in the past uh and often to the point of taking too much of the money that's been raised for those private corporations and also giving those private corporations access to people's personal data. Um, so I think it's very fine that we've moved that within to, into the Newton Public Schools data system uh for those reasons. Um, there was a lot to read here and I have a question as to whether another issue is in one of these policies or needs to be. And that's the question of, how do we ensure that students, for examples, mi- members of uh athletic teams are not put in the position of feeling pressure, undue pressure to raise funds for fear that an overzealous coach who's hoping to raise funds for, for, you know, that sport's purposes, for fear that, that there would be recriminations from a coach or a teacher for a failure to participate as aggressively or raise as much money as, as as other students. In other words, how, how do we, how do we keep there from, there? Is there any kind of statement that protects students from undue pressures when there are fundraising campaigns?
There is language in both policy and in the guidelines that staff, students and families should not feel coerced into any form of fundraising. Uh, specifically within the guidelines, there's that students cannot be required to fundraise. They cannot be required to pay dues. The language is there. It would not stop the errant coach who is overzealous, other than we need to make sure that as a culture that we are um promulgating the guidelines in the school system and making the ADs um communicate um these expectations. in the school system and making the A.D.s communicate these expectations very clearly with the coaches.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Tamika?
Thank you. And thank you very much for taking a closer, deeper, deeper dive into this policy that you've helped to create and the guidelines there too. I know last time there was a lot of angst, if you will, about making sure that the wide scope of organizations that would be impacted by this guideline were contacted, were reached out to for feedback and that we didn't have unintended consequences because of the policy and the guidelines that we were being asked to adopt. It sounds as though, I know April Stein is amazing and she's connected to a lot of organizations, but I'm wondering about the possibility that there still remains groups out there that haven't been contacted, that haven't had a chance, an opportunity to share their perspectives or their concerns. And quite frankly, might be unaware that there's this new, new kind of regime or way of doing business with the Newton Public Schools. And so what is your vision for the cadence of how those groups are going to be kind of ported over through the course of this first year?
I think that we have a burden to reach out to them, to make them aware because there's a lot going on and people are moving and have lots to do. And this isn't the forefront of what their volunteerism looks like. I've already spoken to Tricia Kelleher about creating a page on the website for recognized support organizations where we can link to their websites, where we can have the support, the relevant policies linked and have the support guidelines there. It will be on us, me, to reach out to each to share these guidelines, should they be approved with them. And with the openness that we are starting from here, we think we have a working document and we fully anticipate accepting feedback for a full year of implementation. What does this look like? What works? What doesn't work? But there is a burden on us to make sure that the relevant organizations are aware of what the new expectations are.
Okay. I think that's wise and obviously going to be necessary just because PTOC is one group.
Yep.
Amy, or April's, you know, many that she spiders out to are other groups. But like I said, there are a whole range of impacted groups that have yet to come to fore. And so I think in addition to having something like on the website that you described, I think it would be wise to have some type of FAQ-type model where I can just envision that there's going to be a scenario where there's a lot of questions that flow from this. Just like with the equity, why am I blanking on this? The equity policy and all of the guidelines and working groups. And so I think it would be good idea to put out something and just kind of keep it a rolling tab of, we've been asked about this, here's the response. We've been asked about this other thing, here's our response. And really be a living, breathing kind of way of absorbing the feedback and disseminating it out. I think, to the point that Paul raised about overzealous coaches inadvertently, whether inadvertently or otherwise, putting a kind of a burden on students to participate in some of these fundraising efforts. I think that is a valid concern. And I'm wondering if there's a way to ensure that in all of the guidelines and all of the policies and protocols that our staff have to, are responsible for observing, how do we make sure that this, something like this doesn't get lost? Because that's an easy one for someone to, like I said, inadvertently make it, but it's mandatory for everyone to participate in this, but it's not according to this guideline. So how do we, how do we do that? How do we push that out?
So we're, in prior districts, I've done, we've done actual trainings for all the coaches, for the principals. I mean, principals are an important part of the knowledge base here. So Jill has created over the last few years, trainings that we do with principals. This will need to be added to it. We need to reach out to those heads of those organizations and have a training with them. We do have an FAQ started because we did a back and forth with the PTO last year when we started to bring this up about fundraisers and all of that. And we made a beginning FAQ. So we do have some start materials to work with. And it would be a yearly training that we would expect our coaches to go through.
We've spoken to the principals already, but Christine and I just talked this week saying that we think that as this further fleshed out and in application, we're going to need to go back to them again to give them a little bit more guidance so that they feel comfortable going forward.
Okay, good. So in a nutshell, if you had to kind of wrap up the objective of this work, how would you, how would you characterize it?
I believe that this creates a process by which fundraising is consistently approved so that the district knows what's happening in the schools and from that, the flow of funds, both within school operations and from support organizations.
Okay.
And it allows you to do your duty, which is to accept any donation on behalf of the Newton Public Schools that is raised in our name.
Good. All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia?
I have a handful of questions. I apologize if many of them are silly. So you mentioned the boots on the ground, like implementing this. In so many places, I see approval by a principal and a superintendent or designee. In the past three months, I've had like 48 hours notice on bake sales, pizza sales. Will this have a chilling effect on that sort of last minute, like, hey, let's add a bake sale to the play that's happening? That happens all the time.
I don't think it needs to. I think as, from what I've already seen, the principals are aware of this. They've already started calling. How do I do this? Can I do this? It's going, there's going to be some growing pains just as they become more certain about how to do things. But I think we'll get up to speed pretty quickly. And with the basic understanding, we do not want to create impediments to the volunteerism that happens in the district.
Okay. Yeah, at the school level, it seems like they're aware and that's fine. But this next level, so going through you or a designee, that won't be.
Oh, the intent, and I don't think it's in there, is like a bake sale is going to go up to the superintendent, right?
Like, it's. So there's a threshold that's not listed here?
Well, no, I just think the process, as it's laid out, like the principal, superintendent needs to approve of certain things. One of them is recognition of organizations. Some of the other things are certain events. It is going to take a little while as the flow gets going, but it's largely going to be filtered through the principals up through the superintendent, but it's not meant to be for every little thing. Like, for instance, we'll just use the PTOs because that's who we've been working with. Principal's part of the PTO, so they should know, like, it's going to be part of their ongoing work. They're going to know what's coming, right? The bake skills are, bake sales are the smallest piece here. We're talking more about big fundraisers, nights out, those types of things. They should be in the horizon from the beginning of the year, right? And then how that gets tweaked and rolls out or, you know, theater, you know, plays, that's not a new thing. You know, plays have been going on here for eons and bake sales is pretty anticipated, right? So it might take people a little bit to be more prepared going forward and knowing that they can't just roll in with, you know, something to sell. But I think that it's going to have a rhythm as you get going. And I think there's a lot of it that's already going on that is totally fine. This is just shoring it up and making sure it's being accounted for.
But wouldn't we want policy language to reflect, because right now, to me, it reads as though it is all donations and like the idea that the school committee approves all donations.
That's correct. That is the law.
But in, but in. These are standalone 501(c)(3)'s, right?
Excuse me?
These are standalone 501(c)(3)'s.
Anything that is fundraised in the name of the Newton Public Schools has to be accepted if we're going to spend it. If they're just going to fundraise and keep it, then we don't need to accept it.
They're spending it on like fifth grade graduation ceremonies, stuff like that.
So it's not going to come up one by one?
The structure is for them to give us a high-level budget, which we defined today. So they'll give us a high-level budget once they vote it in the beginning of June. So we've asked for it by June 15th so that you can then approve it prior to leaving for the school year so they know they can roll into the school year with that blueprint. What we're trying to do is not make it a granular process, which then becomes logistically cumbersome.
Right. So they know they do that every year, right? They're going to have a fifth grade assembly every year. It's part of their stated budget to you. You see it in June. Unless something wacky happens and there's some major change to it, you won't see it again.
Because Liam will see it, right? It's a 10% differential would cause a review.
Yeah.
Okay. I had another question on. How many organizations are we talking about?
In the current version, we took out the 10% and if it was an expense category change.
Okay. And how many approximately organizations are we talking about?
There's probably 35, 40, less than 40.
Okay. Okay. And we don't do any of this now? We don't approve budgets?
No, and it makes me sweat every day.
I didn't do this in my former district. I ran the 501(c)(3) and we had zero.
Oversight?
From the district, yeah.
So you know how Amy and I know about this? Because we got sued for not doing it.
In a former district.
Okay. Thank you.
Rajiv? Just wanted to respond to something Alicia brought up because that, when, the first time we saw this, that was my primary concern. I don't think we should have any oversight over an independent 501(c)(3). And if we, if we claim that we do, we could be on the hook for anything they do that is incorrect. So my understanding here, and I just want to confirm this, is PTOs as independent 501(c)(3)'s can pretty much fundraise however they want within the legal structure of the law. And we as a school committee have to, basically have to approve the funds when they come into the school district.
Yes, but we need to know what they're doing for fundraising in the name. So this came up, there are so, some PTOs, let's just say, that could serve almost dual functions. One is raising money for the school-based stuff and one is, you know, for community stuff. The concern here is anything that is done with, for the, in the name or for the purpose of the school or the school department or the school's based activities, anything like that, has to be followed this process so that we're not having to monitor. We can, we know that they followed this process. There's some accountability for it. We're not going to, the intent is not to have every fundraiser come all the way up through the school committee to look at it and decide if they like it, right? Or what they're spending their money on, as long as it's within the realm of this, these guardrails.
Got it. But I think back to Alicia's question, for a bake sale, what we're saying and what we'll have to make sure is as seamless as possible is that it has to be approved by the principal and the superintendent. So.
It's just the principal.
I just don't think that's what any fundraising.
But the stuff that's during the school day, that needs specific permission from me. So for example, we have had many fundraisers during the school day, day of school. And so there are certain things that I have to be involved in, but the principal is part of PTO. So they're going to be our frontline on that.
No, I.
What we're finding out.
What I'm saying.
Okay, sorry.
I'm saying the language here says that for a lot of approvals, it would be the principal or designee and the superintendent or designee, which, which I think, given the amount of effort that's gone into developing these is fine. It just needs to be something where someone who's baked a tray of brownies isn't waiting to get an email back from the superintendent before it can be put on a table to sell for, you know, $3 a pop. That's all.
The designee is right here because it's not going to work to go through it for most of it. If there's something that I have any concern about, I can get to her and say, where do you feel about this? There's a line where I would not feel comfortable and I'm going to run down the hallway.
And I don't have an issue with kind of the two, or the joint approval between the principal and the superintendent. It just has to be something that through a designee can work really, really smoothly and then not get in the way of volunteerism, as Alicia pointed out.
The other piece of this is, we have a lot of student fundraising that's going on, which the schools actually have a pretty decent handle on. And it's just making, particularly at the high school, making it consistent between the two schools so that we're asking the same questions and there is oversight for it.
And so that when, you know, little old lady down the street calls and says, somebody just came to me asking for money from the Newton Public Schools, is this a real fundraiser? We know that it is a real fundraiser because there are a lot of scams that happen and we want to be able to reassure the public.
Go ahead, Tamika.
So Alicia's question fleshed out another piece, which is essentially the genesis of why I asked for that kind of, in a nutshell, what are we trying to achieve here type question? And help me understand how this scenario would be reviewed. The PTOs are asked by a community organization to contribute to some type of community event. What, what, what does that review look like? Where does that start? Where does that conclude? I have a bigger, like, I guess, question or is, oh, sorry, PTOs that are in the name of a school should be, their purpose is to fundraise for something to the benefit of the school. So they shouldn't be fundraising under the auspices of Newton Public Schools or, you know, you know, Smith High School and donating to another organization. So I think that's, I mean, I think that's a preliminary issue right there. So that's helpful. I think for me, the gray area, it's back. And it turns on the issue of school community. And are we talking about school community as it regards to that school building and its physical grounds and the parents and caregivers of that school community? Or are we having the more expansive definition of the term community, which then brings in things that happen beyond the schools? And I'm going to give you an example of community organizations that I am a part of. The Harmony Foundation, for example, cultural and organizations that have cultural celebrations throughout the year that might turn to a school or a PTO and say, hey, would you like to assist in some way? That happens all the time. So under this new cycle of review, what would we do with that? Because a case can be made that that is the school community. If the parents are going and supporting this organization and this function, it is per se a community activity. And the parent-teacher organizations, isn't that one of their primary purposes for school-based, community-based?
That's not a donation that's coming to the school.
That's a cosponsor.
Exactly. So that's, I think, ancillary to what Alicia was asking about, what Rajiv picked up, which is, our purview is for gifts that come and flow into and to the schools. There is a whole swath of fundraising activities that don't come into our purview. And I think we need to be very clear and express about the fact that there is still autonomy for these groups to do those types of donations and use funds in those ways, separate from and distinct from the cycler review that this policy is looking to implement.
What are the activities that our PTO, has a charter to serve the Newton Public Schools, are fundraising for outside of the school community?
Community events.
But they're cosponsoring then by donating to those, correct?
I don't think cosponsorship is necessary. It doesn't have to rise to cosponsorship. It may be contributing. Contributing isn't necessarily cosponsoring. Do you see that that elevates it to a certain extent? You're talking more about expenditure. So my concern would be that they've raised funds in the name, people are donating, saying it's going to this PTO for my kid's school and now you're spending it on some outside event.
I can give an specific example. So every year, Newton CPAC has an awards celebration. And every year consistently, at least. And every year consistently, at least when I was on the, when I was the chair, the PTOC would provide some funding toward it. And Newton CPAC does not have a budget. Right? So it was the PTOC and then parents like us who would who would contribute and you know, go to Wegmans and buy fruit baskets and do a lot of other things for this event. So I I think as a specific example, the assumption would be if the PTOC was going to give two hundred or five hundred dollars to the CPAC to provide funding for that event. That would be okay.
Yes, but that's part of the school.
It's not affiliated with any specific school or, right? And and then the other question would be, does that then have to be reported in any way?
I think it would show up on their financial statement.
For PTOC?
Yes.
Individual school, whichever the financial entity is. So what we're asking for them is not to, we've got a sample document for reporting, sharing their revenues and expenses. It can be what they supply to the state, what's required of them through their reporting. We're not asking them to do something different for us. But it's to create that level of transparency of here's what, under the auspices of our mission, here's what, how we're taking money in and where we're spending it. A line item there, it could be listed under donations, and it would be very high level. You all would look and say, we bless this, thank you for your efforts.
Got it. And
And there's no mechanism for them to come and say, can we do this?
Got it. So and and the reason I bring up that example is my assumption, having having read through these, is that the PTOC could, as they have traditionally, provide a couple of hundred dollars to the CPAC uh, as as one of multiple donors. It's not a cosponsorship. But it and it and it should show up in the PTOC's kind of line item budget or or end of year report. And nothing should change, you know, for that process. Thank you.
But just to be clear, there are issues which we intercepted last year that were donations to things that were not even in the sphere of Newton, right? So there there are times where icky things come up and it'll come up through that mechanism.
And so if something is in the sphere of Newton, back to my original question, how do you, just how do you?
By listing it on their document that just as described.
So would you say that, sorry, Alicia, would you say that um, this cycle review has the authority to say that that gift or donation can occur?
I think if it was something.
Community organization where the PTOs are not cosponsoring, but they are contributing to uh, an event or something that where they are going to be participants. Okay.
Gray area. I think the, like, this is what we're signing up for, and we should be very careful. Because what you're asking about, I believe, is governed by the charter of and then you have to honor the donor intent for donations made to the mission of that organization.
That's right.
So including other community organizations, that could be in their charter and then they could claim that right. If another one said, we are in the educational service of Bigelow, we would feel like that's a more restricted way to view it. But the authority is with the law in how these organizations are set up, right? And what they list in their charter as they're making.
And it's even goofier than you think, because, for example, just because we had to read all these last year, one of the PTOs has a charter that says that they they have an exclusive section that's just the arts. So I just wanna say, like, when these were incorporated and and at one question I have for Lisa is, were they even actually ever officially recognized all the PTOs as 401, 501(c)(3)? So that's a question for another day, just for us to research.
I think we have to be prepared that they will be asking 501s, many of them, to redo their documents and charters and stuff like that. So I think this is, it's big.
I don't think they will, because it's a lot of work.
Then will we not recognize them if their charter mission says something that we don't believe is?
So I I'm hoping that we're all recognized already. So let's start with that question. But you can see where this puts us, sets us up for a whole mess of things. Like if we're not recognized and we don't have clarity about what we're gonna do and we don't have a procedure, we really can't get our hands around it, right? So it's going to be an imperfect process until we go through it for a a cycle.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Jill. Let's move to our last item of the evening, which is uh, the presentation of our annual report.
So um, Policy CM is actually enacted in the school committee handbook, which says that each year you will get an annual report covering the diversified activities of the district, the administration's recommendations for improvement, prepared by me and presented to the school committee. And upon school committee approval, the report will be made available to the public and used as means for informing the parents, guardians, guardians, citizens, commissioner of elementary and secondary education, and others of the programs and conditions of the city's public schools. So here's my partner in designing this, Christina Maryland, Director of Communications and Family Engagement. And you have a copy of this before you. Um, I solicited feedback from you last year and as we've gone through this this process this year. And Christina, I don't know if you wanted to uh, present.
I think that uh, it's important to note from a design perspective, um, the report, the goal for this report was really to make sure that we adhere to best practices around accessibility. So there have been some questions, why the blue, and you know, some of the design elements, specific things around like font and stuff, and also reducing the number of pages. Although it's tightly packed, it's fewer pages than it was last year, um, really was the goal. A lot of what we decided in terms of um, the content, of course, it's from Dr. Nolan's um, vision and strategy around um, her leadership in the district. But there are some specific highlights um, and things that we want to pull out um, and talk about in the report, or at least put your eyes to. Um, our English learner program was highlighted in the report this year, which was not done previously, which essentially uh, pretty much kind of erased the program and that group of students that are um, greatly impacted. We expanded several sections um, of the report to talk a little bit more in depth about initiatives that have been launched or beefed up over the past year. So specifically, um, multi-tiered system of support. I'm very cold, so if you see me shivering, it's freezing in here. And and also our Metco program um, was included, which it had not been previously. Um, I did um, hear you on ping when you mentioned um, the section around, um, not the section, but the um, MCAS data in um, in the high school levels not included. Um, our chief of data really took time to think about like what would be um, consistent with previous reports and ensure that we um, adhere, not so much adhered, but followed as much as we could in past practice until we could figure out um, where we could add. The hard thing about a report of this nature is that when you add one page, you have to add three pages because of the way that it's printed. So rather than just adding fluff, um, not fluff fluff, but um, materials that didn't make sense or content that didn't make sense. We opted to um, shorten the science uh, aspect of MCAS to just um, make sure that we kept the pages tight um, and the and the printing tight um, on this. Additionally, um, we launched a lot of new pieces of information, so specifically the district logo changes, the portrait of a learner. Um, and debuted the competencies. Um, although it's on the website, this is actually um, a great overview for people to see how all of the changes in the district um, are connected to each other. Um, and we launched um, the family resource guide, which is a a page um, that the Office of Family and Community Partnerships put together to connect or better connect, rather, families with resources that are related to basic needs. Um, and basic needs include things for survival purposes, so shelter and food, but also um, social services that might be helpful to them um, in their day-to-day or personal lives. Um, and then um, I think the last part I would say is that um, you all are featured in there from the picture I took at the last meeting. So that's a really nice, lovely um, piece of the report. And Alicia, it was great to have you um, included this time. So I think um, overall, this report is a new um, vision of the direction of where the district is going and sets kind of a new stage on um, on what we hope to put forward in the future. I will say I'm not the subject matter expert to many of the sections, so if you have questions about those, we can take the questions and and make sure we get good answers from my colleagues.
I just also want to add that we're very close to um, creating the backend data dashboard to go with the new strategic plan that was enacted by our group recently. So we have a retreat on next Monday for all of central office to really tee that up. So that will be a feature that will be here, although it will be on the um, district website and will be updated twice a year with information. So it'll be a more real-time, that an annual report is is a very uh, last, last century kind of thing, right? But um, I do see a place for this type of of document, very helpful to hand out it to city councilors to have as a PR document, but um, rest assured, your vision and guidance to me of the interactive dashboards for families and for people to look at our district will also be a reality. This is not the only game in town. In city, I should say.
Questions, Rajiv? So so one question and one comment. Uh, one question. Christina, was it you who changed Dr. Nolan's title? Because on the cover, it seems like it's it's different from what it usually is.
That was what we said last year in this annual report as well.
So it was, I took what was in the last year's annual report and pretty much replicated most of what was there. Um, the only real big changes were things that um, came from the different departments and such, but she did, she was listed as head teacher last year as well.
So next time, could we do Grand Poobah of Education?
Of course. Well, I mean, you know, we, the superintendent is the instruct, the lead instructional person and head teacher of the district. So it's really great to know that um, she's passionate not just about leadership, but about the actual learning that's happening in the classroom.
And and then the, and then the comment, which Dr. Rontree isn't here, but I was gonna give him some grief for this as a he's a a major Ohio State fan, but the photograph of him with possibly Michigan's most illustrious basketball player was really nice to see. I'll send him an email. Thank you.
Please do. We'd we'd enjoy that.
Other questions?
Me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, this kind of publication is always time-consuming. And very difficult, because you have a lot of things to put in and you have to prioritize. And sometimes, you know, might get some complaints, why this piece not in? Now I raised exactly the same issue and I thank you for e- explanation. But again, um, uh, you know, I I'm very impressed and uh, the publication. I just wondering, uh, last past two years, this is third time, right? Um, I don't know how many people have read this. Now that's interesting.
You haven't had me here yet, so I'm I'm really gonna push um, push our principals and um, and all of our, like, department heads and even our senior leadership to use the annual report as a reference point to share with folks. Um, we, once we finish this meeting and we get your um, go-ahead, our plan is to publicize it widely with families um, to ensure that they all have it. And we, as a team, um, Dr. Nolan and I have a plan to ensure that when people have questions, we always let them know where they can find the best information. So we do answer questions, but we also let them know that um, nothing's hidden from them, especially when it comes to the annual report, because it's a great snapshot, um, although it's forty-four pages. But it is a great snapshot at helping people understand um, all of the moving pieces within the district and how they work together.
That that that's right. Um, you know, we are all conscious of the our budget. And otherwise, I would recommend to have some hard copies distributed in the city hall, city councilors. And and you know, for for some seniors, probably they still like to have a auto copy in hand rather than check online. Because uh, this could cost probably five dollars, a couple of dollars for each copy if you print.
I think so.
Uh, I I know that's money, but uh, I really hope, because um, for people, you know, young young folks, they they probably love to have online, like my kids. But I think it's important, because we are really marketing this. And 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 we all learned from past few years, you know, teacher's strike and uh, budget issues. And we need to educate our communities. And um, you know, you know, it's it's a Newton school system is is so important. And um, I just hope that with all the energy resources put into this publication, if not well utilized, that that's a shame. So um, do whatever you can. And I know that school principals and, you know, superintendent's office and city probably should all publicize this. I I I really hope that those numbers were kind of syncing and people understand why it's important. Now I have a specific question. I'm a little bit disappointed, little bit disappointed that the the MCAS data has put at the very end of this publication. And and I know that you have other things.
Decisions.
And and you know, I I know, I know, I I'm I'm looking at you, but I know you are not the, uh, probably shouldn't take all the, uh, you know, um.
Well, I'll tell you, I um, so my office, we've been hosting um, interns from the um, spring board program for the year. And um, one of the assignments that they had was looking at the report um, in in the past and also similar reports from other districts. And that was one of their um, uh, things that they pointed out as well. And sometimes I, you know, I took a lot of what they said, but um, unfortunately, the way that it was structured in previous years, it was just very hard to figure out um, how to uh, place everything, um, because essentially the way that it's designed is the goals are supposed to help you understand what, help you understand what what we're looking to do. And then you can look at the student data in a different lens, rather than seeing the student data and then hearing about the goals and trying to, trying to figure out like why things look the way that they do. Um, but we always can have opportunities to change it up. That's the good thing. We are the architects of this, so we can take what you and and our and the students, they'll be very happy on Tuesday when I see them to say that they knew better than I did. But well, we can always switch it up, which is the great thing.
It also occurs to us that we want to put our college acceptance overviews here. We, so that was, we've done that in annual reports in the past and we thought we we don't, we, it was an oversight of us not to have that in this as well.
Yeah. Just just one voice, uh, quickly, let me just raise the two other issues. Of regarding the uh, page thirty-nine, the MCAS science scores. Uh, was there some kind of uh, error here? I'm looking at the Newtons, um, you see that the very first line seems missing for twenty-three to twenty-four. Did I miss something here? I cannot see that dotted line here for the um, for the most recent year. If you look at the um, Newton, which should be um, you know, um, dotted line, seems stopped at twenty-twenty-three.
See what you mean?
Um, so I think that that may be, um, so there's two things. The scale of the of the um, chart, just because of the way that it is, we have to do it at, um, begin it at thirty percent to a hundred percent. Everything's so closely um, tracking based on when I talked to Katie about it, that at times um, we can't really make the chart. Essentially, there's overlap.
It's behind the orange line, I think.
So.
I thought about that, but if behind the orange line.
There should be a dot.
Yeah, there there should be some note somewhere saying, because otherwise this this people, because I tried to see what's the status of Newton's science score, but I could not tell whether we made a huge progress or still, you know, stagnant or even dropping. This is not clear. So and I assume that if anyone else paying attention, that they will have similar question. Last point. Again, this is a suggestion, just one person, you know, do not take too serious, but for this kind of annual report, um, you know, and mentioned that reporter will also showcase some of our programs, accomplishments. And I think probably it's good to include some accomplishment of our Newton sports teams. Performing arts. Uh, performing arts, you know, Newton jazz in Newton's house, they made some uh, huge, you know, uh, uh, accomplishment, you know, got some prize. That would be very nice to put a one page, what we have accomplished. You know, because those things really catch people's attention. And we can talk about all the other important things, I know. You know, uh, the goals, all that. I bet many people will skip over, look at the headline. But if you're talking about something, we, Newton has accomplished last year, got some national awards, I'm sure. There were quite a few. Because I saw some other school report, they love to put this at the very beginning of their page. Sure, our district, what I have there. And you know, we don't need to go out of the way to to brag about that, but it's important. And I, I hope next year, we, we would include that.
So Anping, just to give you the information right now in real time, that dot, should it be, it should be at the sixty-five percent level.
Sixty-five?
So right in the middle of
Okay.
Between Brookline and sixty percent.
So, that means shouldn't be covered by other district line. We should have our own.
It's probably covered behind the, yeah, the blue.
The blue.
I, I think what happened on the chart is that Natick is, is right at the same level as that one, and so though, it was a complete overlap.
Well.
It's helpful to know that.
Yep.
Yeah. Now, now, um, Doc Nolan, uh, why aren't these numbers? And I got impression we still have room for improvement. Our uh, MCAS datas. You know, without Natick and Cambridge, and I'm being very honest here. Uh, our data will not look that great. So.
Well, I just pulled up the chart for you for high school. So on Monday, when I have a full superintendent's report, I'll include the science data for high school in there. We look quite strong, actually.
And, and I know, uh, we, we're still at the stage of, you know, doing our, you know, all the strategic planning and the profile learning, all those great things are just starting, so. Uh, uh, you know, um.
Well, the bigger issue is what you heard about tonight. So you heard that Liz in middle school had, and elementary school has been doing the field testing, and the official adoption by everyone of the vertically aligned science standards has not yet occurred. Now it will, because you've approved it. So now we will be able to say with certainty as we move on, this is what has been covered, and it is aligned to the MCAS expectations.
And lastly, I, I want to emphasize, uh, MCAS only MCAS goes only part of uh, learning uh, uh, process, and I, I shouldn't uh, put too much emphasis on this. So just let people know, uh, but, but this is an important part of the, of uh, accomplishment. Thanks.
Thanks, Anping, Tamika. And Rajiv.
So, kudos and congratulations on your first annual report. Thank you. The third, I, it's, it's lovely, it really is. It's the third year that the district overall has had an annual report. Um, and I think each year it, it does, it gets fuller, it gets better. I will say um, that I was one of the, I, I don't, one of the requests that I had last year was for us to brag about the things that are accomplishments uh, and be very deliberate, no disrespect, Anping, but yes, brag about the things that we should be showcasing and highlighting. I think too, far too often, NPS gets, you know, it's lion's share of the um, perceptions of things slipping or not working as strong. And I think when our students do something that's remarkable or um, highlightable, we should indeed highlight it and archive it as we do. You know, all of the other things happening in, in particular years. Um, so I, I would put, put in a plug as well for that. And I, I love the fact that um, I think within the first couple of pages, there was an acknowledgement that the uh, logo and the, the what is it? The branding of the Newton Public Schools, and really hitting that on the head in a way that I don't think we've seen uh, too many other places. Right here, front and center, we're proud of the change, and here's what it means. I think that's a very strong, important thing to uh, insert and really kind of help to frame this year. And uh, the only thing I would, I would have wished had been there is an acknowledgement that that had happened, that that work had started, what, like a year plus ago to changing the branding. And just to kind of frame it and, and take it out of this current national climate that we're in, because it did, it did really start prior to, prior to the now. Um, and so uh, just well done. I think it's great. I think there are points to improve on for the fourth annual Newton Public School uh, annual report. Um, but this is a, a really great, great one from you. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Rajiv?
Couple of things to add. I, I actually agree with having the MCAS scores and kind of the numbers at the end. For, for the reason you laid out, which is, let's talk about the work we've done. And, and now here, here are the numbers, here are the results. And so, I'm with you on this one.
And it's subjective, right?
It is subjective.
I think um, this, this report this year, I think, is really interesting, because we're in such a state of change as a district that some of the flair that we usually would have in there, some of the like, you know, the accolades and things, and um, and rethinking the format in different ways. Um, just, it, it wasn't as, as high of a priority as trying to help people see that there's a lot of change happening and making them comfortable with the change, because that's, that's the hardest thing um, with a report of this nature. It serves so many different audiences that you kind of have to figure out a way to pull everybody along um, as best you can. The seniors, the um, folks that don't have children but are uh, hoping to have children, people that are never gonna have children but care about the schools, um, and so on and so forth. And so, it's, it's a, it's a tough publication to, to do in those ways, but you know, we always take recommendations and suggestions. Um, I am, I will tell you, Anna, I yell in the background with her, and I say, we cannot add more pages. No one's going to read it after this point, but you know, I think, I think your point makes sense.
So, this is a high-quality document, right? Nice job on it. Um, the other thing I would just say is much as it's not interactive, there's some power to having a document, something you can hold, something you can flip through, bookmark, you know, fold down pages, like I want to go back to this. Um, I'm assuming it's not cheap to print, but.
Our students printed it, so that's a great thing.
The Newton North Print Shop?
Newton North Print Shop.
So Tom Donnell and, and team, thank you very much. It looks fantastic, like everything they do. I, I certainly see benefits to having these copies, not just kind of lying around, but uh, but in strategic places, in principals' offices, at the ed center, Nana's office, your office. The last version, when I took it around, people would see it and be like, hey, where can I get that? You don't get one. Uh, limited edition, you know, this is my copy, no one else can have it. But I think there's a lot of power to having a small number of printed versions, and it's worth the investment and, and the money to put in and, and use thoughtfully. So, thank you.
Tom and I are best friends now, after the first print. Um, he was very, very um, helpful, and he was actually super surprised at um, getting, getting a document from, I think, somebody just working in some random office in the schools from um, that seemed to be um, print quality. So he was really excited to print it and actually enjoyed it, and um, we're gonna work on some additional runs for it.
Great, thank you.
I say you should brag about that, too. I mean, how many, that's an accomplishment, that we have a professional-grade printing capability right there in our own.
Absolutely.
Chris? Anything from over here? Uh, Anping, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, just following um, Rajiv. If as school member, we can have a, a couple of complimentary copies, I'll be very grateful. If not, I'm willing to pay money. Now, I'm willing to pay money, this is my last time, because next year I would not be here. So, I'd like to have a few copies souvenir.
You'll still visit us.
Okay, okay. Well, I don't want to break any rules, so if, if I'm willing to pay, you know, hopefully not too expensive, but uh, couple of dollars, uh, you know, it's very nice. Uh, I, I agree, because ninety-nine percent, I'm very happy, and the information very important. And you know, if people ask me about what's Newton School System, this would be a nice document to share, rather than you tell them something, because they might forget in a next hour, but with this, they can review, and if they have questions, certainly I would be happy to showcase Newton School System, so, thanks.
So we just need your approval, so we can disseminate it.
Oh, are we, are we voting?
That's what our policy says.
Okay, well, then in that case, is there a motion to approve the annual report as presented, or should we send them back for more work?
I, I'm going to move to this, prove it.
Approve it, okay, not send them back? Is there a second to that?
Oh, second.
Okay. Moved by Anping, seconded by Tamika. We'll take a vote. Board one?
Yes.
Board two is yes. Board three?
Yes.
Board four?
Yes.
Board five?
Yes.
Board six? Board seven?
Yes.
Board eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller is absent, so that's seven zero with two absentees, Lisa. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work, Christina. It looks great. That concludes our agenda for this evening, and we're adjourned.